I'm getting away to convene the meeting, we have a council member just called up. Someone gave her a chance to get here.
Okay.
I'd call the regular meeting of the San Antonio City Council reporter. Please join me in with President Midgets. My pleasure ladies.
Into the fire of the United States of America. And to the great honor for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Piler.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bill Powers.
Here. Item two, public comments. This section is intended to provide members of the public with an opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Please note that the California law for the Evans City Council, the payment act of the new matter, which is not enforced in the JAM Act, the rest is determined to be an emergency item in the city council. Any member of the public wishing to address the city council in a public comment shall first secure the mission of the presiding officer, stand, name his or her name, and address the clerk for the record. Each person addressing the city council shall be limited to three minutes or more than it unless the presiding officer indicates a different, now he'll be allotted. Do I hear any public comment from the public? Seeing none, we will go on. Item three. City communications. City council communications. Let's start with Councilmember Piler.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Turner.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Murphy.
I have nothing to report.
Seeing. For ten, Mayor, Mr. Porter. One.
I turned. Went to LaCo meeting. Did a transportation meeting, to the Beckworth Fire meeting.
Okay, is it here? And I attended LaCo as well as the Transportation Commission. We had a few items on the Transportation Committee. Where they reported out. From a phone meeting that was attended by members of the city and as well as the county. And this was regarding STIP cycle. And the STIP means State Transport, Transportation Improvement Program. And. It's sort of good news, bad news. We don't have enough money to do much, but we have a little bit of money and if we want to borrow more money, we can even get more done. But we still owe it. And it is put against future STIP money. Okay, what STIP is, is monies that the local governments more or less have control over, whereas money spent by teletrains on through routes such as the North Loop in Portola or probably seven to two Portola, Port Santa. All right, is funded through different allocations. So the STIP funding, one suggestion made by our TAC team, who interim city manager Kennedy and our Public Works Director Todd Roberts are members, was an area. Page three. City of Portola has expressed interest in pursuing small road reconstruction on streets south of the river. The project will be within the following, Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, and Rio Grande Avenue. A pavement project within these limits will be planned for a five hundred thousand to one hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount. And anyone who wanted to add that.
Well, Dan Bashan's even a bigger part of that conversation. He was on that phone call and we've determined that that's, that's a nice chunk of money to not get much done. So we're hoping for improvement there.
Isn't it all a combination with those funds? That whenever we use state and federal funds, we have to put bicycle lanes in?
Well, this was one of the comments at the TAC was, well, it would be nice to assist and help in some of the goals that the state has in mind for our roads. That we decided not to this time. The dire necessity of our pavement improvement is, is so paramount to other, other needs that we would just try to get something paved.
Well, my concern is if we add it to the problem, parking problem on the south side already by putting bicycle lanes in and no parking outside of the streets.
You know, one way, yeah, make it was one way road. Yeah.
That's really not worth the money.
Yeah, and I think it was the general consensus in that very short, that brief phone call that given us kind of a, an overview that there weren't enough funds to get too serious about a serious conversation yet.
Well, and the other thing, we can reiterate the same struggle we've had for how many years now that we have to replace the infrastructure underneath the sewer and water? Or paving a street means we're involved. So we have to do it all at once and until we get that kind of money, which was thirty-five million to do a portion of town. We will patch and continue to patch and patch some more. So that's all we have on that. Any staff communications? Anyone from the fires?
No. The others, they report on the first of them.
Okay.
And I just leave those on the agenda and the.
We go to the first. City manager report.
Yeah, just real quick again, I'll report, give another update on the budget ago. That was the organization that helped fund people's water bills that were passed to. There's been fifteen so far, bills paid for the total of almost thirty-one thousand dollars. An average of about two thousand dollars per person. We several months ago signed a contract and it was a big emergency to get a contract in for the organization that's putting in the electric, the EV chargers over there in the parking lot on commercial. It started with a project of two chargers. And then there were some additional funding, I guess, for the organization. So they started to revamp the, the program to try to put in a few more. So we're like in the middle of the two that we approved and wanted to get going. Been a little delay because they see an opportunity to maybe we can put a few more in their last design that was sent over. It seems like they wanted to take up too much space, so we're in a, in a little compromise, something in between their seven right now and our two. So, so that's, that's moving on and hopefully that'll come to fruition and we'll have a spot to, we'll be the only place in the county that actually has electric car chargers. So again, Portola has to pave the way for the county of Plumbus. I, I, it's August. Snow season is going to come about quicker than we think. So I think I'll just start commenting now and reporting that the city of Portola is going to be as strict as we possibly can on parking. So I just want to get the public to know that we will be towing vehicles this year and we will be very tenacious on making sure that the roads are clear and working with our citizens to help them get their cars off the road so we can actually get snow cleared. So I just wanted to kind of make that, that general announcement and maybe someone from the newspaper or the New Plumbus Sun might want to put something in their, in their publication. So that's it for me.
I haven't figured out how to access. Plumbus Sun, yeah.
Plumbus Sun dot com. Plumbus Sun dot com. It's a dot com, it might, they might also be a dot org, but dot com also.
Can also do it on Facebook.
Okay, okay, I put something wrong, so it wasn't coming up. Anyway, thank you.
You'll find it. It's S U N.
Oh, that's it. Bill, I'll give you the website.
Thanks. Item four is consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The city council will act upon these at one time without discussion in councilmembers, staff members, or any interested party in requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda for the spectrum. Additional budget appropriations will require a four or fifth roll call vote. Any, I'll play, no, staff, no, councilmembers, no, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda and the resolution for two, five, five, seven, authorizing payment and
the minutes.
And the minutes for eight, nine, twenty-three. Thank you, Bill.
I'll second that. I have a motion in second, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes. Thank you. Item five, consider approval of resolution number two, five, five, eight, below the city's direct charges in the economy property tax bill. Susan.
Thank you. So this is an annual event so that we can put the direct charges for what's affectionately called the fire tax. The six dollars and twenty-six cents on unimproved land and the twelve dollars and fifty-two cents on residential. And then some other amounts that depending on acreage. You've been approving this for many, many years, like nineteen eighty-four. This, this goes on the tax rolls. This particular assessment is not teetered. I think if you, if you don't remember what teeter is, that's where the county basically fronts us like all of our property taxes. And then if anybody's in arrears, the county collects on that and they get the penalties and interest. But we get all our money at once. So the total this year is nineteen thousand six, fifteen, forty-four on fifteen hundred and forty-six parcels. But that doesn't mean that we'll get that much because like I said, it's not teetered. It's based on who's actually paid their property taxes. So this is a resolution that needs to go to the county so that they can put this on the property tax rolls.
Okay. Public, any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from councilmembers?
I had a question, but because I read the whereas blah, 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 doesn't really explain to me. So we have to do this every year for the county to be able to give us our tax money, is that my?
We have to do this, not property taxes, property tax is a whole different thing. This resolution only goes for the fire assessment. The what's in front of you by, by parcel number. And we have to do it every year. And I think you have to look at it as, it's kind of like the county asking for a whole, whole harmless agreement.
Okay, I, I, now that, yeah, I did, I thought it was the property taxes itself, so this is the fire.
This is just the fire assessment, just the, and we have to do this because it's not a regular property tax.
Got it. Thank you.
And maybe, maybe next year we won't have to.
Yeah. That would be good. I just didn't understand what kind of, if it was property tax, but thank you for explaining to me about that it is not the fire, it's the fire, not the full property.
Right. Okay, that explanation I'll entertain a motion.
Remove approval of resolution number two, five, five, eight, enroll the city direct charges on the county property tax bills. I will second that.
I have a motion in second, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Item six, sheriff's contract, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Discussion costs hard to.
Okay, so this sheriff's contract is identical than last, to last year except for the dates. Were proposed in the same pay one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the county for the law enforcement, they're providing the sheriff and undersheriff and I have agreed to the terms. Last year, we waited for the board of supervisors to approve it before I brought it to the council. This year, I'm just going to jinx us and approve it here and then see what kind of argument the board of supervisors wants to bring up. Where, or it'll just be no problem. So, so we're just hoping that you guys agree to this and and hope the B O S does, so we don't have to come back again. One little detail, cops funding, I still call it cops funding, it's less, less, whatever, yes. Several years ago, it was about a hundred thousand dollars, it progressively went up. And the last few years, it was up in the higher range, one fifty, one sixty, one forty. There were some calculations for, for cost of growth or something. This year, the, it's been challenging a little bit getting money from the auditors department because of staffing and the turnover and the issues there. This year, they think we're back down to a hundred thousand, so Susan and so when we, when we base our contract off the funds, we normally turn over most of all that cost money right over to law enforcement. Something that, you know, the community of Chester and Quincy doesn't have to offer. So we did this luckily for the county, you know, we have money to give. So hopefully we're going to, between Susan and the auditor, they'll sort that out. But our, the reason I bring that up, when we do our budgeting for one thirty, we budget a certain amount that we're expecting out of the cops funds as well. So right now, the auditor's saying we're about forty, fifty grand shy, maybe even a little bit more. So hopefully that gets worked on.
I think it's just maybe a misunderstanding about the funding that's happened since twenty thirteen. Because it was around twenty thirteen, well, twenty thirteen, we started getting money and what year did I show you, we started getting the growth? No, that was twenty.
It was about that time, yeah.
We started getting growth funds and it's just consistently, you know, gone up. I think that the auditor's going to discuss that with Craig Goodman, who is helping them in the auditor's office. And hopefully we can get that all straightened out.
Okay. Did the money go through them first before it was discussed?
Yes.
So that's it, hopefully, board supervisor's fine with it and county can get their money. In the meantime, they're still providing a level of service to us.
Thank you. Any public comment on the side? Seeing none. Any further comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accrue sheriff's contract twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Hey.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes.
Motion free.
Item seven, Dollar Park.
Okay.
Which is not included in the, it is an item for the special.
Yeah, so, so councilmember Turner asked to, as, as we know, she brought this up several months ago during the budget process and and there was, there was some conversation about it. She, she and I think councilmember Murphy discussed a little bit about it. And we decided to get it on for discussion. You guys can, you know, this isn't an action item tonight, but it's a discussion item where you guys can ask a few questions, see if, if it's something that maybe the staff needs to be directed to pursue. And I think Leah has some, she has quite a bit of information to share and you guys can just have a little chat and we'll sit here and watch the show. And we'll just decide what needs to be done later, if anything.
Councilmember Turner. All right, so I just kind of wrote a little ditty here so I would remember all the points that I wanted to talk about. So the purpose of this discussion is to see if the council would like to pursue food planning with public works on a cost and a location for the project. Several areas have already been looked at by Todd and myself. My first thought was to build it at Baldwin Park, but with the road work on Joy and now we can't have parking on the street. I kind of went away from that because if you can't take your dog and park on the side of the street, then how are you going to go see the dog park? And then Jim had brought up the idea of putting it on Highway seventy so that people passing through, if they needed to take a break, they could pull over on the side of the road and let their dog out, enjoy the river, maybe go over to Dollar General and make some purchases. So Jim and I talked the, last week about maybe possibly putting it where the old mustard cabins used to be. There by the Vets Hall. I went and looked at the area after Jim and I met. My only concern with that area is it does get flooded quite often when the river comes up and we get a lot of water. So my other thought was possibly putting it at West End Park between the highway and the Riverwalk area. That's a pretty big area. It's flat and it would be easy access if somebody parked along the highway. There is parking there. So those are the two areas that we've discussed. I don't really, I thought about putting it over at the other park here, but again, you have the same problem. And then with all the activities that we have in the park, it might not be such a good idea to have a dog park right next to the swimming pool. So some of the high points of having it down on the river, a lot of people already do take their dogs down in that area. There's barbecue, there's picnic tables, so you can sit there and. That's forest service land. Is it forest service land? Where the barbecues and the picnic tables are. But the east, isn't it what you're talking about? No, west, it's hard. Okay, I'm sorry. West End Park. So the air, there, there is a big enough pull-off on the side of seventy for somebody with a travel trailer, motorhome, or camper could pull over and not be in the street or the road. So my estimated cost for this project, I just went on Home Depot and kind of figured out forty by sixty area with fencing, everything that we would need, gates, et cetera, et cetera. Is going to be, I'm thinking between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. I've already talked to Susan, she thought we might be able to use ARPA funds for this, so it wouldn't be out of pocket for the city if we could do that other than maintenance and keep upkeep. How big is this park? Well, the, the first, my first drawing was forty by sixty, but we could make it any size we wanted. So I have pictures. I mean, at the West End Park, because part of that land is belongs to the Vets Hall.
There's county, there's a county parcel in there.
Jim, help me out here.
Well, my thought, I don't know what you're referring to by West End, but mustard cabins to me.
Right.
Is that it go in the center? Uh, where nobody does anything, there's, there's kind of a walkway, half circle walkway with picnic tables.
Yeah.
So if you put it in the center. I'd like to see, I've been to other cities that have artificial turf. So it's green all the time. I don't see a problem with flooding, if floods, it floods. Then we go back and get FEMA funds and, and go back and repair it.
The mustard cabinet cabins I thought were between where the West End Park is and the Vets Hall. So I'm, I'm, they were torn down before I left. So it is actually where the picnic area and stuff is, okay, all right.
And my thought was that it's something that people with RV are passing through, look for in almost every town and there are, there's also something the locals could use. It would increase the people who were using the parks. They could fish, they could sit there and have a picnic and put their dogs in the, in the enclosed area and let them run. Leah's got a great, she's been seeing other, other cities and what they do and some signs that are, are rules that you put up.
I've been, I've looked at some things on dog parks and everything and most of them seem to have like two parks, one for little dogs. I already, then I have that plan as well. If you want to look at these patines with the pictures from abandoned, this is the small dog park. This is the double gate area.
Yeah, it's just a separation.
And then, and then here's the big park. Now their park is probably a hundred foot by a hundred foot. I just, I don't think we have enough land out there. And plus you don't have the cost of how much extra it's going to take city employees to go up there and clean it up and get their trash and all that and stuff. Well, that's, again, you've got signage that you're going to have to pay for, which I've already, I, I got pictures of what the abandoned, city abandoned does. And they do post their dog park and it says, the city abandoned is seeking volunteers for the maintenance of the dog park. If you're interested, please call. They have volunteers that go and, and do the, the city does the mowing. But they do have volunteers that go in and clean up and you have your, you know, your little poop bags and everything and but it's a good idea for socialization. So dogs that don't get socialization can go and play with other dogs. And you don't have to worry about, we do have a lot of strays here, we have a lot of dogs that run loose, there will have dogs that run loose. And this might, this would be a safe area for somebody who wanted to take their dog and let them run and not have to worry about a stray dog or a dog running loose coming and attacking your dog.
Well, another consideration, at the next transportation meeting, we are hinting that more complete details of the Crunk, what they're calling the Crunkberg Project is going to be available to us. So we make it an idea of what that part of the project that's coming through Portola will mean for bike lanes, curbs, and gutters and paving and widening the area all the way through the diversity creek bridge. So that may have an impact on how any parking would be, but we want to, of course, keep the parking that's now available to West End Park. And it isn't too far, if you drive down in there, if you look to the east, the line for the county property isn't very far beyond that. So that area where Tom and Linda Kuli moved the whole thing, made a heart rate. Didn't work very great until they did that. But it's probably worth waiting until we see what they're going to do as far as finding something.
So what you're telling me is part of that area that they put the sidewalks and all that in is part of the county as well. I was under the assumption that the city went to where it says city of Portola and where the listing is.
Yeah, that's, that's ours going to the west. But the east though, is a parcel right next to the Vets Hall. There's a parcel that's un, unrolled.
I don't think we're talking about anywhere near there.
No, I know, now, we want to be clear, where Mr. Murphy, in, in his past, I got into discussion with a woman from Greenville about planting only native grasses.
Well, to, to achieve that with a grant, we had to, part of the environmental impact stadium is we had to seek the binding input, but I don't think there's any restrictions now.
You're thinking of, you mentioned earlier, you're asking if you're looking for native ashy turf then, right?
I would, the better ones I've seen in my travels had astridur. And the dog park owners are pretty good at leasing dog parks themselves. So the worst that could happen is you see them come in with blowers and blow off the pine needles.
Yeah, well, and the astridur protects the native grasses underneath.
From the sun and the water.
Because the geese, the geese need all the grass seed.
And it wouldn't have to be all astridur, if you can have part of it be gravel or, and, and that way if the dogs get wet, they have an area to dry. If the dogs get wet, they have an area to dry off, because some dogs don't like to poop in the grass, they like to poop in the, in the rocks.
And the asperter just really adds to the beauty of the park.
Hmm, yeah.
Our new dog likes to just poop in the house.
Well, they, they're saying, well, the way down, it's all the small, small side for the small dog, and then the large dogs, it's gonna fit in a forty by sixty.
Absolutely, okay, absolutely. The, the, the small dog park area doesn't need to be very big, because you're putting yorkies and, you know, teacup pools and stuff like that in it, it doesn't. We could have a dog park the size of this room right here, or smaller, and just take a ten foot section and section it off for dog, for small dogs.
Well, we go to the dog parks when during our travels, we don't spend more than ten minutes. Hello, we unleash the dog, let her run around and park each other thing and play out and will it.
Well, that's. Fine, but I can see people here in town taking their dogs down there and leaving them all day while they go do something.
No, you can't do that, you can't leave.
Yeah, then you must have done it, man.
And who's gonna enforce it?
Who's gonna enforce it, yeah.
Well, that's a good question for that, but that, that's not the purpose of the dog.
I know it, but I'm saying that. For one thing, I, I can't see where there's enough room down there on the property we have for it at that place, plus. We don't know how far they're gonna widen the highway if any, because they're gonna put sidewalks and bicycle trails in and everything else, so we don't know where that's gonna come from. So where are these people gonna park their campers in their, over in the, the, the parking lot, or?
We're not gonna let the state take parking away from us, that's for sure.
Right.
And, and, and it seems to me that it'd be better that we have it planned and designed when they do do those plans, so that they have. Have to work around and then, and do the improved parking there.
I don't know, have you walked down there and seen how big that area is? It's, it's huge down there a lot of times.
It's huge.
But I, you're talking in the circle there, where.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking about. But then where are, are people who are going to go use the park, the park?
Well.
In the parking areas, it's already, they are. Huh? There is a park.
Not in the park, this is a, should be grassy field, you know.
I haven't seen anybody use that area for anything.
Oh, I have, I have.
The circle area? No, I see them use the park and going around, but not.
And they park.
No.
You're, you're talking about this, where they park, that's not where we want to put the dog park, what, tell me a picture, okay, I can do that. Alright, so, here's the area, okay, here's the parking. Okay, there's sidewalks that go along the river, here's the river, okay? There's some trees in here, okay, we could, this is the parking area that's there right now. There's, and then here's the lift station. Okay, okay, you're talking about that, that, yeah, right here, that's where I'm talking about.
Uh, some people park. You can't get in here, Pat, there's big rocks and there's a, there's a gate. Well, when they drive down there, they're driving down into this?
Yes, that, right now, that's exactly what they're doing, that's a parking area, and I'd have to go, I don't think, I didn't think there was that much room.
There's.
We need to take a field trip.
We, yes.
We need to take a field trip.
Yeah, we can do that.
My, my only, my only thing that I, I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all, uh, my only thing. Uh, what I would like to see is, uh, estimated hours of what the city maintenance folks would be dedicating to them.
The maintenance on it, what that's gonna cost.
Again, that's why we're proposing that. Myself and Todd and John sit down and do a proposal and try to figure all that out, but. The council has to direct us to do that, to be able for, for us to do that correctly.
I wanna go down and look at it, the borough approval maybe.
Sure, well, it's not, yeah, it's not for, we're not making a, a call, but I'm aware.
What, what was your question, Leah?
All we're, all I, while we're asking for tonight is for the council to direct. Public Works to meet with myself, Jim, whoever, to sit down and, and do the, uh. A regular proposal and figure all that out.
Yeah, I think tonight your objective, if I'm understood this right, is to get an idea from the council members, if. There is, if there's an overwhelming no, then shouldn't go anywhere, or if there is some direction staff, so I'll, I'll share some of my concerns when you guys are done. Um, but if there's.
Just looking for a consensus.
Yeah, just looking for consensus to see if we wanna.
I have no problem with a dog park, I'm just not sure that that's the right place to put it, because I think there's limited parking there. And I don't remember the space they're talking about, I'm gonna go down there and see if it's there. And, um, we don't know what, how much the highway is gonna take. When they put in their bicycle trails, I mean, I don't know, do they have more right of way on the highway than they have highway there?
All highways have a greater right way, and it, yeah, it depends on, my comment would be. If we have a uh, dog park there, and they're having to design their highway, they better darn well improve the access to the park.
Yep.
Because it's there already, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Once it's there, then.
Mm-hmm.
Then they have to build around it, if it's not there, then we lose.
They don't, they just move the fence, that's what they're doing up on their way.
They're gonna have to bring in a lot of builder to build that highway out to where the dog park is gonna be, okay, I gotta go look at it.
So from the, from staff's perspective, through my brain. Um. Wherever it might be if it ends up being, okay, uh. I don't believe a dog park is a deal killer for staff time in the grand scheme of things. Um, does that mean we have? Extra time, we're hoping to find some projects to do, no, not at all. Would staff be perfectly happy without having to man a dog park? Yes. But it's, it's probably doable, now, um, when we talk about volunteers, volunteers. For any city event is still managing staff, there, there's, unless you just got some person that's hanging out down there and handling stuff. On their own, unsanctioned, yeah, you probably can't rely on. The local people doing, doing what the thing is, we have to go in assuming that the city's gonna have to take care of that, so, still, not a huge deal, but it. But volunteers is still managing staff, in fact, it's typically more difficult than managing staff. That we all know that, um, we, we don't necessarily have a lot of extra time to. Take on another park or anything, but again, uh, it's probably not something, if it's. Built fine, it's probably not something that uh, is, like I said, a deal killer, now, in your estimates though. Um, we probably didn't consider payroll, staff time to actually build this thing and do some, whether you're gonna farm out. Fence building, or us doing, drill the holes and pour concrete and all that, so there are some other things to consider, you mentioned a field trip. I would recommend not making it a city council together field trip, I think you all should just hang out, go down there, check, check it out yourself. Take some pictures, make some notes for a, a future conversation, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess by the temperature that I've just taken on this council, that. Um, you will probably direct staff to do a little more research to kind of. Take this project a little more seriously than it has been the last few months, pretend it's there, and, and we'll spend. A couple hours hatching out what we think it's gonna take, we'll get Kelly together, who manages park, we'll, we'll decide honestly with staff. How we feel about this, and it'll be all a mutual conversation.
Well, I, I feel also that if, if it's not a big enough park and stuff like that, and there isn't easy parking. Most people that are traveling right now stop at the rest stop, they've got bathrooms there, they've got picnic tables there, so they can picnic. And they've got two places, they're not this end, they have to, but some of them go too far in and let their dogs run out there. And the people that have little dogs, keep them on the leash up in front.
So, so it.
I think this is gonna be more for the citizens of Portola personally.
Really, and it, and it would be used by us.
I know, but I, I think it's more, that more people within the city will use it than people who are traveling.
My, my only thing that I, I might add is, is the location is a flood zone, right? So when you're looking at ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, you know, on, on just the fencing and materials, um. Let's just say it floods out, and the fencing and all that gets wiped out.
Yeah, when you take any consideration that, we, Jim was. Serious, but probably also a little bit joking, which that FEMA paid, it won't be that easy, right, yes. Um, most likely, we have to assume that's gonna happen and assume budgeting for the future to repair things like that, so.
Riverwalk.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And I'm, and I'm more than willing to, if somebody can find another idea, a place that would be a good idea, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that, this is just the, I. This is just the, the suggestion that Jim and I came up with, Jim had also suggested putting it down on the Riverwalk. But then you have the issue of where's people gonna park, and you think, and also. If people are down there riding their bikes, or they're playing frisbee, then you have that issue as well, so.
City of Brookings does their, their frisbee, of course. They just, they just, that's often their dog run. And you'd be.
And, and who the, like, abandoned, there, they have a frisbee golf that goes all the way around the dog park, so. It, it's just, do we put it in, do we put it in the center of town, do we put it somewhere where it's accessible to people traveling through? I mean, I stumbled on the one in abandoned by accident, we were driving around looking for a park to let our dog run, because the RV park we were staying at, dogs had to be on a leash. So he couldn't get any exercise.
Why don't we do this, why, why don't we, I mean, our discussion tonight, you know, we, we talked about one location, why don't we try to look at two more locations within the town? Sure, to give us a better option of, of where we wanna place this thing.
Absolutely.
So, if I may. Direction to staff from council, let me, we will, we will discuss. Future management, the construction of all of the things that we can think of, pros and cons. No matter where this park is going to be, okay, where a park is going to be. And how about staff give direction back to the council members? This'll be fun. Big park. We, we just can tell you guys what to do now, um, you know. The five of you, or whoever is interested, I don't want staff to go try to pick a spot, I don't think we should do that. I'm, I'm, but maybe I'm, I don't know, maybe, since the concern is, you know, you guys tell us there's gonna be a park somewhere, we'll, we're, we're gonna do for a park. Like, once, once you guys maybe amongst yourselves, you know the city very well, and know the questions you need to ask, see, I might end up just being in the West End, but. We'll talk about generally man, building a park and managing a park, dog park, and if you guys wanna like, come up with a couple other ideas. Share, you can share individually with us, and we'll put together pros and cons of those spots.
I think too, John, that, um, you know, Kelly. Uh, who's familiar with all the nooks and crannies in town, that it might be a good idea that they, I mean, just pick their brain and.
They might, Kelly's gonna be the first person we talk to.
Yeah, she would have an idea of where it might be ideal.
And one of the other spots that Todd and I discussed the day that we drove around and looked was up at the baseball field. And put it between the two baseball fields, but my only concern about that is. During baseball season and not being able to take your dog up there and park, and, I mean. Just, just thoughts, I mean, there was three or four places that Todd and I drove around and looked at.
So, so when you look at that too, Leah, you're looking at people that, lots of people fly in here with campers and so forth, to the dog park. But then in the middle of summer, when Little League's going on, or when baseball's going on, it, it could be a conflict.
Correct, that's, and that was my, my feeling, by right.
Uh, and if they're going there, they're gonna pass this park, I see two people around, two dogs out there right now, I would much rather. Have them in a fenced area than walking by a dog by a leash and having a dog come charge on them.
Absolutely, and that's, that's my thought as well.
It's a person, it's running their dog over there now, going to go the River Park, or, or. The West End Park and, and run their dog there, I don't.
They know it's there.
I don't think they will.
You're gonna have, I'd send it regardless, yeah, you're gonna have a percentage of people that.
Well, these are questions that, so you bring that up, and I was already thinking, would, would we deliberate on staff side, um, if, uh. It might be one of those, if, if the council decides to have a park, wherever it might be, we build it, we might low scale. The, the construction of it to determine use and desire, and if it's. A big use, maybe we improve it, if there are the funds, if, if it's not, we didn't spend a lot. With, with the production of the park, so, those are things that we'll think about on the.
Well, if it does produce, it would be ideal to have a dog wash over there, I'd bring my dog down washing it, and you, yeah, you can wash that cake and all that out.
Dog, take it. Now you're talking about major.
It's saving money, it's, oh, just kidding.
But if you have, have a water source, for, so that you, that, that the people can water their dogs. That is, that is something that you have to have, you have to have a water source, because you'll need to, to put a bucket out there so they can drink, because that was the way it was.
Bums for that, that's true.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, a lot of good ideas, and.
Should we just consider that our direction, how our discussion, any clarification from anyone that's?
Uh, public comment, anyone wanna enter into this conversation?
I, I have a comment.
Okay.
So we've probably gone to a hundred different dog parks. And, um, there's been small ones, there's been big ones, there's been ones for big dogs, a little fenced up area more for your smaller dogs. Um, they usually have water there, and they usually have a hose that you can spray, so you can spray off your own stuff, so some of them have just been dirt. Nope, nobody but mows it, nobody really maintains it, um, the people that go in there clean up their pets' mess, and it's all good.
What about lighting, have, have you been to some with lights? Or is it just strictly day use?
I think, um, I don't think we've ever stopped to let, um, our dog run during night.
Yeah, another comment, permanent.
And I have one more.
Okay.
And location's probably gonna be odd about this, but I would love to see some kind of location be found to where. Um, and I know parking's difficult, especially if you're in an RV, but to actually where they would have to come more into town. And like, the park would be great for that, but so that you could get people into town, oh yeah, there's a drugstore, we could stop by, or hopefully someplace to eat. None of that.
Very, perfect. Yes, ma'am.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Uh, two quick comments, I like, I, I would prefer wherever it is, that it's not near the park due to fecal matter being tracked into the pool area where children are walking without shoes. It's the one concern, there is a very nice dog park in the city of Manteca that I visited. If you would like to see how they operate, that, that would be a great place to start, they do not allow after dark visitation, because there is no lighting there. They have big and small, the biggest problem that they come across is not only emptying, uh, emptying recyclables, uh, picking up after the dogs, where people do not pick up after their pets. But also the grass dies, due to the urination that the dogs have, grass dies, and so they have to reseed, so they have to block off an area. And it gets a little expensive for them to constantly keep reseeding an area that the dogs will destroy, they kick, they scratch. All of that, so you, you'll have to reseed the area, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, okay, see, no other.
I know with artificial turf, because my granddaughter plays on artificial turf over in Reno, and they have very strict limitations on there, like, you can't permit weeds, you can't.
Right, right.
Have sunflower seeds or anything like that around it, I mean, there's a whole list of stuff that. You can't do it. So we need to look into that.
And, and there'll be some studies on that, I'm sure, out there on the food line. Alright, well, thank you all, uh, good conversation, and, uh. With that, we'll go on to our next item, which happens to be a long word, adjournment. So thank you all for coming and leading a journey.
Nice to you.
Nice to you.
Bye.